Person's name?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
John's in charge tonight?
Yeah.
John's in charge, watch out.
I know, did you give him the gavel?
Did you just get back from vacation too?
I'm heading out Sunday.
Glowing. Also, that's a base tan.
I'm in vacation tape.
You're in the fish shirt, ready to go.
Mentally, I'm gone.
I know there's flip flops under there somewhere, right? He's in there in shorts and flip flops.
Hanging there for three more hours.
Yeah, right. All right, seeing as how it's 6:30, we'll get the meeting started. Could I have a roll call, please?
Schnelley is absent. Beano?
Here.
Mar?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Mulzan?
Here.
Smithback?
Here.
Van Kampen?
Here.
Hulda is absent. And Majeski, absent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, we'll move forward with the update on annual appointments for Plan Commission Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. At this time, we'll take them in order. I'd like to open up the table for opportunities for people to name a recommendation on chair. I nominate Greg Schnelley in his absence.
Second.
I move to close nominations.
Second.
All those in favor of nominating Greg Schnelley as Chair, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Greg, for being around. Next item is Vice Chair. I'll open up the table for people recommending Vice Chair.
I nominate John Beano in his presence.
Second. Van Kampen.
Anybody else?
I move to close nominations.
Okay, we'll close those. Everybody in favor of me as Vice Chair, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Is the record show, I think I heard John say no.
Last item is the Secretary for the Plan Commission. Anybody would like to nominate for somebody for Secretary?
Nominate Patrick Mulzan?
Second?
Second.
Anybody else? Close those nominations. All those in favor of Patrick for Secretary, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for April 4th of 2024. Does anybody have any questions, comments on that?
Move to approve.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Next item is 4B for the May 2nd minutes of the Plan Commission. Any comments or changes to that one? Otherwise, I'll take a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Mulzan and Kampen is what I saw.
Yep, sounds good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the public appearances. At this time, we will have community input. This is an opportunity for people in the audience to speak on a topic that is on or not on the agenda. We usually give about, we usually, sorry, I gotta be a little more Pat Sajak. At this time, we'll open up the floor to people wanting to talk on an item that is or is not on the agenda. We usually give about 15 minutes for this. We would ask that you try to keep your comments to about three minutes. I know that we have a group that would like to come up and do such as a presentation. So I would ask that maybe Leanne read the name, or if you have this choreographed, you can just give us your name when you come up, and that's, we'll go from there. Thank you.
Hello, first up, we have Francesca Anderson.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having this meeting tonight. Good evening, my name is Francesca Anderson, I live at 221 Haylor Court. I'm here to share my opposition to the building of an apartment building proposed in Item 8E on tonight's agenda. I first became aware of the proposal to build an apartment complex on the Netherwood-Soden lot after the March Planning Commission meeting where it was first presented. Since then, I've spent a lot of time thinking about this and visualizing the pros and cons of such a building in our established neighborhood. As I've learned to do over the years as a business owner, I worked through the initial emotional response to the proposal, much like any other bit of news that can be a little unwelcome, and let it settle to see how much it might benefit those of us who live adjacent to the proposed apartment building. I've also talked with and listened to others and what they had to say about the building. Two things have stood out to me as a neighbor/stakeholder to this project and why ultimately I've decided to voice my opposition to this particular building early in this process. First, while many of us are aware of the housing crisis in Dane County and realize it continues to be, needs to be addressed, a building of this scale and this specific lot, I feel will negatively impact in an already-established neighborhood. The scale of the proposed building is opposite of the surrounding houses, which are low-scale, single-family homes and duplexes. Amongst the infill lots available to build on, this one is truly unique in its potential as someone's home because of its location and proximity to so many great things around Oregon and all of the great neighbors. The lot has been enjoyed as green space for so long that taking the time to carefully consider all the options for development would be welcome and much appreciated. Residents in this area are eager to share their thoughts, so I look forward to a neighborhood meeting about this with you. I, for one, would be so happy to see more like, single-family homes, duplexes, or small-town homes on this lot. Second, traffic and the increase in the number of users will impact anyone traveling through this neighborhood as Netherwood serves as a major thoroughfare into and out of Oregon. As it stands, two-way traffic at certain segments of Netherwood is already pretty tight when cars are parked on either side of the roadway. Along Soden and the adjacent roads with their smaller 1950s-era width and curves, it is not uncommon to pull over to let others pass because of the growing numbers of cars that park on each side of the road. With the proposed building, there will be a lot of spillover of cars that could only be parked maybe on Soden because Main and Netherwood at that area do not allow parking on the roadway. This will exacerbate existing traffic issues. In closing, I just request that you carefully consider the impact of a project of this magnitude and how it would have that impact on our neighborhood. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sorry for my nervousness.
All right, all right. Thank you, but we try to keep the public displays of that out of the Plan Commission meeting. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Connie Matheson. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm addressing Item 8E from tonight's agenda, the same one that Fran addressed. My husband and I purchased our home on Soden Drive 11 years ago. We've always understood that there would eventually be development on the lot on the corner of Soden and Netherwood, which shares a property line with our backyard. We're not opposed to developing that property. We understand the need for more housing in Oregon. However, we believe care should be taken with how we integrate high-density housing in established neighborhoods. In an ideal world, that lot would be developed as a park, but understanding that that's not really realistic, here are some of our concerns. Netherwood Elementary and Prairie View Elementary are at the south end of Soden Drive. There's already a great deal of traffic that flows back and forth at the beginning and the end of the school day. School buses use Netherwood extensively. Netherwood is also commonly used as part of bike racing routes, as it will be this Sunday for the Wisconsin Milkman Triathlon. Please consider the traffic congestion that it will take place with high-density housing on that corner. The updated proposal has 143 parking spaces, 95 underground and 48 on the surface. With 121 total bedrooms within the 95 units, there is a potential for over 200 vehicles, as public transportation between Oregon and Madison does not exist at this time. This proposal would introduce the need for an additional 100 off-street parking spaces to accommodate the size of the unit. The property has been zoned as a single-family residential for over 50 years. This would be a drastic change from the original vision of the village plan. Several other apartment buildings have either gone up or are going up at this time. Apartments are, for the most part, transitory housing. Homeownership allows homeowners to establish roots in the community, to feel as though they have a stake in the village, and to feel connected to the established neighborhoods. This would be a perfect location for smaller homes or duplexes for first-time homebuyers. Water mitigation is also a concern. Are there plans in place for the overflow that will happen from the retention pond? Covering the lot with concrete will cause water flowage to run towards a neighborhood that is already having issues with water. There are a limited number of storm drains along Soden Drive. The Soden Drive-Netherwood neighborhood is one of the original communities within Oregon. The majority of structures, both residential and commercial, are single-story. A two-to-three-story apartment building would tower over the neighborhood. We believe it would have a negative visual impact on the surrounding properties and on visitors to the village. We respectfully request that the Planning Commission take a pause on determining how to develop this property. Please meet with the neighborhood prior to advancing any plan. We've lived here and paid taxes here for many years. We'd like to have some input into the future use of this property. Thank you for your time.
My name is Delia Markham. I live on East Netherwood Street. I'm speaking a continuation of the same topic. In the 29 years my husband and I have lived in Oregon, the land around our house has been developed. We've known the property across the street would someday be developed. Since the property is currently zoned, single-family homes, we expected the development to be consistent with previous projects. We're not opposed to development or to the proposed dental office at the corner of Netherwood and Main Street, but we have concerns about the proposal for the apartment building. Some of the concerns include the impact on traffic flow. The corner of Netherwood and Main already has traffic issues. The addition of the left-turn arrow for traffic traveling from North Main to East Netherwood is an indication of the amount of traffic currently flowing onto East Netherwood Street. The additional vehicles would impact any traffic flowing through the Netherwood-Main Street intersection and the surrounding streets. This includes school traffic. The Oregon School District was kind enough to provide information about bus routes. There are between 15 and 18 bus routes that drive on East Netherwood Street multiple times a day. This does not include buses traveling for sporting events, including visiting teams and field trips. Housing in the village should include a range of housing options. This property would be better suited for single-family homes or duplexes. Support for this idea includes the recently released Dane County Regional Housing Strategy Report, which explains that the need for new housing includes a balance between rental and owner-occupied property and the need for a wide variety of housing options. According to the survey, 72% of the respondents preferred home ownership, but only 59% currently have that status. At the May Planning Meeting, one conversation mentioned that family housing with three bedrooms was highly requested by potential buyers. Currently, there are at least 150 units in other apartment projects either under construction or being proposed in areas with similar housing. There are many other apartment buildings being added to the community. Other options should be explored for this property to meet the needs of people wishing to move to Oregon and become long-term residents. At the May Planning Commission Meeting, the Planning Commission talked about the vision for the village. One item mentioned was keeping the new construction heights compatible with existing buildings. Most of the surrounding homes and businesses are single-level. A three-story building built on a hill would tower over the surrounding homes and buildings and be a stark contrast to the surrounding residential homes. The Village Comprehensive Plan lists as its first goal to preserve Oregon's character. It also mentions predictable, high-quality neighborhood design, having diverse housing options, and striving for traditional neighborhood design. Also discussed at the May Meeting, this property is included in the gateway corridor. The gateway includes the street's visitors to Oregon travel and form their impression of Oregon. The development should flow with the surrounding established neighborhood to form a positive first impression. This proposal is not a good fit for the established neighborhood and is inconsistent with the village's stated objectives. One last thing I just wanted to mention again, too, on another note, is water management. As somebody who's lived in the village for a long period of time, anytime you're transforming a large green space of property and covering it over with impervious surface, it can cause water issues with where that water will be displaced. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cody Heideman, and I am at 650 Soden Drive. I'm here today to share my opposition to the proposed conceptual design of an apartment complex on the corner of Netherwood Road and Soden Drive. The current proposal causes great concern to many homeowners in the neighborhood. I feel that the construction of a multi-story, multifamily housing unit is not consistent with the area zoning, does not follow the village's comprehensive plan, and will result in a significant degradation of the neighborhood. I am not opposed to development of this parcel and realize that infill development of this area is an overall good thing for the village. We ask that the Plan Commission and Village consider the neighborhood in this process and with any future proposals for this parcel. In past meetings, concerns related to traffic have been expressed relating to the size and access for this proposal. Netherwood Road serves as an important collector roadway for the village and already experiences high-traffic flow. Soden Drive also experiences a large amount of school traffic for the neighborhood and the two neighborhood elementary schools. The width of the roadway, coupled with its curving alignment, can create congestion, all of which will be exacerbated by vehicles parked along the roadway. These things will only become more problematic with the addition of this apartment complex along Soden. The proposed parcel is currently zoned as a single-family residential, as are all of the parcels southeast and northeast of this specific piece of land. Single-family zoning for this parcel makes sense. It presents a development approach consistent with the neighborhood and the descriptions included within the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan classifies the parcel's adjacent neighborhoods as, quote, "low-scale." Further, the comprehensive plan describes low-scale as, and I quote, "Building types could include single-family dwellings, accessory dwelling units, two-family homes, and where appropriate, single-family attached types, such as twin homes or townhouses, and small, multi-dwelling buildings by special permit," end quote. The construction of this proposed multi-story, multifamily housing unit will not fit within the neighborhood description and will have a very significant visual impact to the neighborhood. The village has also outlined and adopted policies for low-scale development as listed on Page 44 of the comprehensive plan, and we strongly encourage the Plan Commission follow these policies as they continue to consider the development for this area. I would also ask that the Plan Commission follow the process recommended on Page 52 of the Plan Commission for detailed neighborhood plans that have, quote, that, I'm sorry, that, quote, "have a proven track record of success," end quote, when considering this area. Finally, other residents are here today to share their opposition to this conceptual design proposal and still more that were unable to attend this evening. Would those residents here, please stand? Thank you for your time.
All right, we are bumping up against our 15 minutes. Is there anybody else that'd like to come up and speak on a topic that is or is not on the agenda?
If I may?
Yeah.
Hi, everyone. My name's Rebecca Hillary. I'm an attorney, but I'm here as someone who lives near where the proposed apartment would be. So this is subject to Matter 80, as we've been discussing.
Do you have her address for quick?
Can I have your address? Yes, I live on 158 Dewey Street.
Thank you.
That's the corner of Soden and Dewey. I have the unique experience of having lived there from the time I was born until I went to college, lived there again, worked as an AmeriCorps volunteer here in the village at the Oregon Youth Center, moved away again for additional schooling and to work, and now moved back home to help my mom after she lost her husband and my father. So I can say I've lived in this place for quite a long time and have a feel for the neighborhood. Just to put this out there, the property in question, you know, has not been really properly cared for in all the years that I have lived and visited my parents. It's not been mowed. During the winter, snow has not been shoveled. As somebody who walks, I walk my dogs, I walk myself, I walk to Walgreens. You know, it's a little frustrating that this property has not been well-cared for and that now the owner of the property may be making a large sale that would dramatically affect all of us residents who've had to deal with them not caring for the property for a long time. That being said, this is a single-family residential neighborhood that we're talking about, and apartments tend to make money for landlords. This actually harms tenants long-term, and as somebody who's lived in many apartments, I mean, it was very useful for the time, but it's not a path to home ownership. It means that people who live there don't really have the proper skin in the game. They don't, I mean, they live there, but they know that likely it's not for forever. Townhomes are a far better option as a way to fit more units into a small amount of space. If something were to happen, then the people who live there would actually own it. They would have more care for the community that they would be living in then, and it wouldn't be such a dramatic increase in the amount of people who live there. I'd like to point out that luxury apartments, or apartments of this type that are planned, across the nation have been unfilled due to high rates. And even if we could fill them here in Dane County, which seems likely, a lot of times, the fact that rates increase is going beyond the ability of people to pay. And let me just tell you, we are not an affluent neighborhood. We are perhaps one of the less affluent neighborhoods in Oregon. We're not Bergmont here, we're not talking about putting an apartment in there. This is a neighborhood where homes have been there for a long time. The home I live in was built in the 1920s. We have one bathroom, so do so many of the people who live near us. You know, this is an entry-level home neighborhood where people perhaps didn't move because, due to financial reasons, this was the best place for them to live. And as somebody who grew up here, it was a wonderful place to live. I hope that people who move into the neighborhood, and there are several homes for sale in our neighborhood now, I hope that they'll have the same experience that I did. A walkable neighborhood, a place where you can meet friends and have families, single families, who have true value and care for their homes. Just to conclude, I really think that there's a better way for the village to approach zoning. Right now, I've seen that we've had apartment buildings that have been a bit scattered from where many of them are, but really, apartments in the same area benefits the people who live there. I know when I lived in apartments at various times in my life. I lived in Wausau and in Madison, for example. I lived in communities that were primarily people living in apartments, and that was nice because we tended to be people of a similar age, of a similar stage in our life. And it was just, it ended up being a good mix to keep them together. There are no apartments really close to where this is going in. I know you can argue that a block or two away, there are apartment buildings, and that's true, but nothing of this size or nature. And again, as many have stated before me, it would dramatically impact the neighborhood that I grew up in, that I loved, that I continue to love as I live in today. So I thank you very much for your time and consideration of reasons both perhaps emotional, but more importantly, practical, that have been raised before you. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll close this portion of the agenda and move on. Item 6 is Communications and Miscellaneous Business. We have none. Unfinished Business, we have none. Item 8, New Business. Up for discussion and/or potential action. Item A is a review and possible approval of a Stakeholder Engagement Plan for the 2024 Downtown Master Plan presented by Consultants Redevelopment Resources. At this time, I would like to ask, maybe, could you at least give us a little bit of background on what we're talking about, and then we'll turn it over?
Yep, we'll kick off for Dana. So, thanks. So, as you all know, we have hired Redevelopment Resources and their partner Studio GWA to do our 2024 Downtown Master Plan. Over the last few months, we've worked together to create a Stakeholder Engagement Plan for the Downtown Master Plan, which will, of course, run alongside lots of data gathering and other efforts that'll all come together for a final plan. We knew that stakeholder engagement was extremely important with the Downtown Plan, given all the properties that are up for discussion, all the competing uses downtown, obviously, kind of the relationship between new development and historic downtown and how that all fits together. So we worked with our consultants to come up with a plan that provides a variety of different input opportunities, some ones that we haven't tried before, some new ways to kind of meet people where they're at rather than expecting everybody's want to come spend a beautiful summer evening here at Villatall with us. So I'll let Dana Sarver from Redevelopment Resources share a little bit more about our plan, and hopefully, we'll be out at some events as soon as Saturday at the art fair.
Yeah, so I'm really excited about that. We're gonna have a survey for the public to participate in. They can either stop by our booth and fill out a quick survey or use a QR code to fill out a survey online. We're going to be attending two band concerts in the middle of June and early July, a couple of other summer concerts, the National Night Out. We're holding a Business Owner Focus Group Listening Session the week of June 24th. And then, we're planning on another neighborhood mobile-walking tour-type event, to be determined at this point in time yet. And then, interviews with key stakeholders. The survey that I mentioned, that will be live on Saturday, will be open from Saturday until about mid-July, and we're gonna help work with the city and staff to help publicize that on the social media, the website, as many avenues as are available to spread the word about that. And then, we're gonna be mailing a postcard with the help of the city to residents within a quarter-mile of the subject area.
One question that came up at Village Board, we shared a little bit about this on Monday, was that will be a separate survey for the downtown residents, since there are specific topics of interest and concern for them. So that survey is yet to be written, and that'll be later in the summer, but that would be probably a survey first and then inviting them to an in-person event, walking tour, where we're walking around and talking about different locations and neighborhoods in downtown Oregon. So we'd love any feedback from you all, if there's anything you feel like is missing. The stakeholder interviews are also kind of to be determined. We know there's a couple large user groups downtown that we'll want to hear from. The Fire District is one, Senior Center is another, kind of embarking on the new Senior Center redevelopment, but perhaps speaking with people in the kind of real estate development. Yeah, realtors and brokers and things like that, too. But we, I wanted to get this, hit these events early in the summer, so focusing more on the really broad engagement and drawing people to the park. engagement and drawing people into these events to start us off and then getting a little bit more specific as we move through the summer.
Kind of helping us direct and create a vision for the Downtown Master Planning Project. So that's what the survey kind of highlights is there's an opportunity to gauge and rank priorities within that, in the different things, so like vibrancy, economic sustainability, several others, there's like nine, so sorry. Can't remember all of them.
Does anybody from the Plan Commission have questions, comments?
It all sounds good. I guess I would request that the Plan Commission be notified when the walking tour is scheduled, since you're saying late June, potentially it could be before next meeting. So something I'd like to participate in.
Okay, yeah, I think the Downtown Business Owner one, we expect to be late June. The Neighborhood one is to be determined probably July or August, but yeah, definitely let you guys know of that date, and we can notice that for Quorum too, in case we would just like to attend to be flies on the wall.
That's something, and that'll go out and e-notify?
For noticing the Quorum?
Well, no, for like noticing the walking tour and that type of thing. Just wondering how would people, if they just wanted to know when it was?
Yeah, again, I think that one's, there's two different walking tours. The one would be the business owners, and again, it's kind of invite-only, and then the neighborhood one would be largely geared towards people that live within a quarter mile around the downtown. I don't think we're gonna be checking addresses and things like that too, but just an effort to keep it a manageable size. I think we'd probably try to break it up into small groups.
It's a way to help us organize focus groups and have everyone have a shared and equal voice in the process.
Anybody else? The only comments I've got is I am really, to Patrick's point, really appreciative of how you are meeting people where they're at. I think that's a good thing. I think that taking positive action or offensive action to sort of gather more people's opinions is a good thing. To that point though, I wonder are there sort of things put in place to not stuff the ballot box, if you will? If we just send out QR codes, is there a way for that to be checked against your home computer versus your laptop versus your MacBook versus whatever? I want to, what I'm trying to do is make sure that we get as many people's opinions as possible, but that they're not a focus group that is trying to, you know, put forth their own agenda. I want to hear from people, not from a group, kind of thing.
That's an excellent question. I would have to check with the platform provider, because I know like each, each survey response has an ID that's attached to it, but to get to your point of is there, is there a way? I think there's, it's possible, but that may be an offline conversation.
Yes, yeah, I'm not expecting an answer today. I'm just, that's the things that go through my little head, so just putting it out there. All right, anything else?
No, we'll, we'll keep you guys posted through the summer, how things are going, and let you know when we have some schedule for some of these other events.
Thank you for coming in. Item B, review and possible recommendation of a zero lot line certified survey map for Lot Six of the Oregon Parks neighborhood and the duplex replat application from Kismet Development. Is there somebody here to speak on that?
All right, well, she's walking up here. I'll give a quick background. So obviously Items B and C are closely related. This is one of our Oregon Parks duplex replat lots, and I know Kismet's been in front of us a couple of times with some different developments, so this is Lot Six, so looking at corner lot, obviously, but a zero lot line duplex, and then they've submitted all the materials for the the SIP, so to the site plan review with landscaping and exterior materials and everything, so no concerns from our end. Engineer just had some general comments, but nothing that needed to be changed on the CSM, so we're recommending approval here, but are you adding anything or available here for questions?
Any questions? We finished Lot Five right next door about a few months ago, and then we also have just purchased Lot Seven and Ten, so you'll probably see next month as well.
Anybody questions, comments, concerns?
I thought you had a very thorough submittal. Thank you.
Seeing none. Other than that, anybody want to make a recommendation for approval?
Uh, some vote.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Patrick. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item C, review and possible approval of a specific implementation plan for the Lot Six of the Oregon Parks neighborhood duplex replat for the applicant of Kismet Development. Seems like everything is in place. It was a nice full packet and submittal. We already approved the original. Do we have a motion? Unless somebody's got questions or concerns, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Larry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item D, for discussion only, the review of a concept plan for a potential dental clinic at six fifty North Main Street. Applicant is First Choice Dental. Is there somebody here to speak on that?
Good evening. My name is Steve Lyons. I'm with S J L Government Affairs and Communications. I work with First Choice Dental on outreach and often in communities throughout Wisconsin.
Hello, my name's Charlie McCall. I'm a project manager at Sketchworks Architecture, and we work with eighteen forty-eight in constructing the First Choice Dental. I guess I'll go ahead and give a quick introduction to the project. We've been working with eighteen forty-eight on these for several years now. First Choice, as I'm sure you know, is they're, they're kind of all around. There's lots of different locations. Past history was it started out with three different clinics that kind of came together under the umbrella and created First Choice Dental back in the nineties. Since then, they've grown to about twenty locations now. Is it not closer?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. So right now, you know, we're working on a couple of different locations that'll be constructed this next year, and then Oregon would be the next location. We do have a template that we follow for each one of them, but then we work with the villages to make them unique to the site. This site, obviously, you know, we've been working with Elise and her team to figure out how the stormwater, you know, how that's gonna work, knowing that we'll need a retaining wall, you know, things like that. We always focus, as you can tell in the rendering, that's realistic to another location that is going to be constructed here soon, so the landscaping, everything is accurate. We do look at those details mainly based off of the Dane County requirements for the points for the landscaping.
Yeah, we currently have two hundred and forty employees at First Choice Dental. We're in and around Dane County, you know, in Stoughton, Sun Prairie, Cottage Grove, and we're excited to possibly come to Oregon as well. So that's what our sketch and drawings are about tonight, and happy to answer questions.
Elise, you want to give any background on it before we open it up?
Just a couple points and just to touch on a few points the neighbors brought up too. So obviously, we updated our comprehensive plan last year and made some changes for our single-family neighborhoods to more of that flexible low-scale density. This parcel, however, previous to that big update, I think it was twenty twenty-one or twenty-two, we did do a comprehensive plan amendment for our long-range plan, sort of what we want to be when we grow up for this lot to plan mixed use, and that was carried forward in the update, the full update to the plan last year. So just wanted to point out that commercial and some more of, you know, mid-to-high range housing or a mix of uses on this lot, a dense mix of uses on this lot was what we envisioned several years ago, even kind of before our full update. So just wanted to clarify that while single-family zoning still exists on the parcel, zoning is very flexible. It's our long-range plan, our comprehensive plan that sets the vision for what we'd like to see this parcel as. Yeah, it's been great to get to know the First Choice Dental team and met with them a couple of months ago and have already given them a lot of feedback about building orientation and parking lot and putting my planning commission hat on. I've heard you guys talk enough over the last couple of years. I know what you're gonna say, so hopefully address some of the questions on a larger scale to, and I think we recognize this as a, we all recognize this as one of our last infill, greenfield redevelopment opportunities within the village that doesn't have, you know, buildings that need to be knocked down or businesses that need to be relocated and it's an opportunity to, again, take a look at how do we transition between this commercial core on North Main Street and this intersection here where there's other commercial uses and kind of flow into the neighborhood there. So just keeping all that in mind, I do appreciate the amount of work so far that's been coordinated between First Choice and Lakestone, just in terms of talking about driveway access, and we'll see a little bit more when we get to the Lakestone plan too, but there's certainly a lot still up for discussion, but appreciate from both parties the willingness to work together and make sure that the plans are, you know, playing nicely as much as possible, and we can try to reduce, you know, issues about entrances and things like that, combining where possible, and I think there'll be nice uses next to each other. But yeah, happy to, basically, the concept and the materials, what you've shown on the elevation, that's not necessarily this site, but that's sort of an example of that's what your typical building materials, windows. I know you guys shared kind of a typical floor plan too. A lot of the patient rooms are all on the outside, lots of natural light and a big focus on employee well-being and making it a nice place to work.
Yeah, we greatly appreciate working with Elise. A lot of communications, phone calls when we met initially, but to your point, this rendering is very similar to what we have in our twelve locations in Dane County, so.
That's all I wanted to start with.
Thank you. Anybody have questions, comments that they'd like to bring forward?
Comment and a question, I guess. I think you have a nice project for that corner. So I think that's a good fit. What I don't understand is future driveway. Is that because of the potential project to the east that you're not committing to that driveway on Main Street? Why, why would you delay a driveway?
So obviously, we're at the preliminary stage. We had a plan before this where we had two driveways. We just like to have that on there as a potential, you know, if you know the site, the grade, it's so hard to put that in.
It would be a tough draw.
It's not, it's not very likely at all, you know. It's just a placeholder for the time being for discussion.
And some of that was based on the conversations with Elise on having the driveway and even the location of the driveway across from Walgreens and having that match.
And that is gonna come up in our next project, and that is the four parking spaces to the northeast of the lot adjacent to the drive-in. I have challenges with those. To me, that's an accident waiting to happen. So.
Yeah, and to address that, you know, we're still working with Lakestone Properties to figure out how do we marry these two projects together if something does go in there, you know? So that was just an idea of what they had shown on one of their previous plans and then bringing that in. I agree with you. It doesn't really work too well, but we have more parking spots than we'll ever need there as well.
One more question. If this project goes through, would you rebuild the existing retaining wall that's on the sidewalk?
It would all have to be rebuilt.
Yeah, so it all matches your property. Okay.
Anything else?
My question relating to retaining walls and such, it looks like you've stepped them back maybe from where they are, or are you looking at a double level?
Yeah, it's a single level. It's just based off of the, I believe, the setbacks.
The retaining walls now are at the sidewalk, and you've got them stepped back
They, they are.
Ten or twenty feet or something. I didn't know if you were gonna do.
It's still up in the air right now. Honestly, we've had initial conversations with our civil engineer, but being that we are so preliminary, we do not have them under contract yet at this time. So you get a lot of architectural designers trying to figure out the civil plan.
Yeah, and that, I mean, there's a real hill there, and I don't know if you were intending to try to stay on top of the hill or if you were considering lowering the hill down and bringing the building down to a more reasonable scale to the sidewalk into the roadway.
Anybody else? Looking at this, it just, I agree with Patrick. I think it's a good use for the site. I think that it will be a nice addition to our community. However, I think that the footprint is, as you've alluded to, just kind of a cookie cutter. It's sort of like your prototype. There is nothing here in what I see or from what has been presented that makes it specific to this site. As we move forward, I'd like to see the prototype, and I get it, you know, I've done enough dental clinics, how the support stuff is in the middle, the ops are on the outside, you know? You've got room to expand on the far side. I get it. It makes sense. But there's nothing in here that sort of says it's different than Cottage Grove, it's different than Verona, and I think there are things that you can do aesthetically to say that it has the same materials as all the other places, but it doesn't tie it together to Oregon. You've got a great opportunity, as we've talked about with the grade change, to somehow create an entry sequence that, that's a little bit more special. Your, your entry itself is kind of tucked away from your parking, so how do you sort of engage your clients to get them to that entry and away from your parking area? I challenge you to sort of do that and to tie it back to the corner. It's sort of pulled away from the setback. I'd say push it to the setback closer, maybe using the building even as a retaining wall or part of that retaining wall, landscape underneath it. Those are things that you could, could do to help really enhance the aesthetic in tying it to this location specifically.
Thank you.
I agree. We, we often start with that, so to really to send a message that we want to be conservative and we can grow from that, what we don't want to do is
Yeah, yeah.
scare folks to say it's gonna be.
I'm not trying to hammer on you here.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
That, that comes with every community we've worked in, you know. We had one where we had added a tower to it for the local community requirements and then.
We want two.
One is hard enough with that design, but we already have started to look at that, you know, it's just is the site good enough? Will it work for us, you know, from the funding side? That's what we're working with Elise with, and then taking that next step. So, so far, what we've worked with is the glazing, the welcome entry area is to the corner, you know, so that would be more welcoming view from the intersection. Beyond that, you know, obviously, we'll develop the landscaping with the, with the terrace. It won't just kind of be thrown in. But yeah, certainly, that's the next step, so should be keeping forward on this.
I'd even go so far as to challenge you to, to take a look at how many parking stalls you've got to your ops, and if you feel like you are overparked, to dash it as future to along with a dash for your future expansion. You know, nobody's got a crystal ball, but at least that way you're covered if you find out that five years down the road that you're just not enough parking stalls, you've got something there. But in today's day and age where we are pushing for public transportation, we're pushing for bikes, we're pushing for, you know, all those things, we're starting to see a change in sort of how people use transportation, and we'd like to look at that as well. Is that enough for you to chew?
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Great, thank you for coming. Next item on the agenda for discussion only, review of a revised concept plan for a potential multifamily housing development at six fifty North Main Street. Applicant is Lakestone Properties.
All right, Brian's making his way up here. Most of this is kind of described in the memo, but the, the bullet points that are bolded there kind of highlight some of the changes since the last, I think it was the March Planning Commission meeting. Obviously, just have a site plan here to review, and it does show both of those sites together. No elevations were provided yet, but Brian, maybe you can share a little bit about your, your guys' vision for the site, some of the changes that were made since last time.
If it's okay, I'd like to just address some of the neighborhood comments before we get into it. I, I do want to point out that we did meet with village staff over a year ago on the site and looking for concepts and ideas, and one thing that they came to us with is, is they want density. So this whole project started through an initial meeting through staff on what they'd like to see on the site. I mean, to give you some background on Lakestone Properties, we did the Jefferson Crossing site. There was a lot of feedback in parking and some other issues, so we're very much open to listening to Plan Commission and neighborhoods, but the initial direction on this development was density. So that's why we started with this concept plan, worked with Jim Lees on these designs, and we've taken some of the feedback from the last meeting and tried to bring this concept plan to the next level to see what the feedback. plan to the next level to see what the feedback might be. And again, we all know this is just conceptual at this point. We want, we want clear direction from Plan Commission, if possible, before we get too far down the road. The next step would be a neighborhood meeting, of course, and that, then we listen and have some time with the neighbors, but we're just too early for that. One of the things that I think John pointed out on the last meeting is he doesn't want to piecemeal this together. And we really waited for that commercial tenant to come in here. They have traction now, we've made some changes, so please give us as much clear direction today as possible where Plan Commission sits on this. So as noted in the changes, it's, it's still a three-story building. We reduced the units from 102 to 95. Our architect worked with the design of the building to step back from three stories to two stories on the south end, near the residential side, to try to bring the scale of the building back. We also listened to the feedback on the alignment of the driveways with Walgreens and we were able to shift that around with a shared access point with the commercial user. We're looking at this point of bringing the stormwater separately for each site. I think that creates, simplifies some things for us and, and for that commercial user, depending on timing and some other things. So again, those are the changes that, that we made and we got some momentum with that commercial tenant. So I don't feel like we're piecemealing this together any longer. We want that clear direction from you guys on what you'd like to see here before we really dig into the, the very time-consuming, expensive parts of planning this site. So I'll open for questions and, and feedback here.
Elise, anything you want to add before we turn her over to PC?
Um, one thing I meant to add in the packet, which I think I forgot to include, was the elevations on the site. I think last time there was a lot of discussion about sort of a hill towards the back and I can include that in the next submission, of course, so we can pull it up on Access Dane. But I don't, I don't think, I was kind of surprised when I went back and looked at the elevations, it was not quite as mu- much of a high point as I thought there was before, just based on the last elevations and if we want to, Jeff can work on pulling those up. But I was happy to see, no, just pulling up like G I S elevation layer. Again, happy to see that there's one access point and that was aligned with Walgreens. Appreciate both groups kind of working together to, to find a way to make that work. I know too that the, the access, we talked a lot of last time about the underground parking and if that would spill out onto Soden or whatever, so I think...
That was an additional revision, yeah, we did shift that.
Yeah, so I just wanted to mention, kind of on that south end of the site, there's that curve and that's where all your, imagine, you know, trash pickup and then vast majority of your tenants would be parking underground. Obviously, we have landscaping requirements, screening requirements between different types of uses as well, so that's not included here. And just so the neighbors know, that would definitely be part of any formal submittal is looking at the screening, the buffering between these two properties. Usually that's done with landscaping, sometimes with fencing, but typically landscaping to make sure there's not headlights shining in backyards and things like that too. But yeah, Brian's right, overall, I mean, as I mentioned, this is an opportunity to densify. I think we were all, I know I spent a lot of time looking at map of the village and getting calls from people that want to build, you know, build their businesses here or provide housing here and trying to find sites that are within our boundaries that don't, aren't continuing to annex farmland and, and expanding the village property, but trying to densify and make a walkable, bikeable community. There are few and far between, you know, opportunities to do so. And so whatever direction this property takes, I think, I think we've always acknowledged this is right on our gateway corridor too, this is an opportunity to improve the site and, and make it a really nice feature coming into the village and also, you know, try to address issues of diversifying our tax base with commercial, adding housing choices. So there's been a lot of ideas over time too about what about a mixed-use building with commercial on the first floor and, and, you know, multifamily surrounding that and transitioning into the neighborhood to lower scale. I think having these two different users on board, there, there are two groups that have a strong track record and I think would be great additions to the village. If, if the sites are to be separate like this, I think I would love to hear from you all too about ideas that you have to make sure that the site is working the best it can on its own, but also with the neighborhood. You know, Netherwood, if there's, you know, things we can talk about with traffic and maybe the parking situation changes there where, you know, it's one, one side of the street or something like that. Jeff can share, I don't know if we have plans for any restriping or repaving of Netherwood in our C I P on public works side, but...
Not currently, but we can.
Yeah. So yeah, just wanted to highlight a couple of those other changes since then and...
And I'll address the, the mixed-use side of it too. If there's any questions, would Lake Stone have an interest in doing commercial on the first floor? I would say minimal interest, we would need a user to commit early on. You know, when we had the, the site that the new Quicktrick got built on, we had control that, we worked with a lot of commercial users to try to find the right fit and it, it was difficult. We have a site in McFarland that has a large vacancy for the last year. So we're, we're very cautious of putting a mixed-use commercial on the first floor and the financing side of it. Banks are very, you know, you've seen some of these spaces sit for years. So we would be open to it with, with a user. Without that, I think it'd be a difficult part of the development to bring in that first floor. We also own one in Manona where it creates some additional issues. You've got apartments above, noise complaints, so it's not our ideal situation to have commercial and on the first floor with residential on top, but certainly open to it if a user came along that had, had the use and we could fit it in the development early on.
Anybody want to make questions or comments here?
I'll step into it. No disrespect intended, but I don't think this is appropriate for the site.
Okay.
You ask what we would like to see. To me, what's appropriate would be townhouses, not to exceed two stories, so that there is, we try to strive for a step down as we go into residential neighborhoods. Three stories to a single story is not a step down. I know you tried in, in, on the east half of your lot to do some, somewhat of a step down. I think there's legitimate concern about the traffic. I would like to see something along the lines of Middleton Hills where the townhouses come up close to the sidewalk. I think you could get a fair number of units and that would be more appropriate for the site.
All right, anybody else?
I would weigh in with what's been said here that...
Larry, pull up, pull your microphone over to you, please. Oh, no, I saw it, you got it right there, I didn't see the microphone.
I, I would chime in with what's just been said here that I, I like the idea of the townhouses as opposed to the larger...
They, they can't hear you.
Can you get a little closer to the, your mic there?
I, I'm in favor of going with the townhouse road rather than this larger apartment building on that, that corner. That corner's always set there in our, in our eyes for all, all these years since it was a farm recognized, hoping that that would be something special that was built there that was servicing the community and, and what it looks like and what it does. So I, I'd be in favor of seeing what the options are on doing sized-down, more neighborly hood-looking space there than the, than a, than an apartment building.
I'll swim against the stream. I, I don't have as much concern for the, the size of the buildings that you're putting up here. I think it's just the bulk of it is, is what's kind of giving me pause. Until I see the, the grade, until I see sort of the, the scale of it, I, I just think that we're going to be up out of the ground on Netherwood quite a ways. And beyond that, I think that what I would, would want to see is if it were, if this were to move forward, is how do we handle one curb cut for 100 units-ish and a, a commercial building? Especially when that commercial building does not operate at really different hours. Dental clinics tend to start early, normally with a, an insurance guy, you know, they don't come in until after most of the residents leave, so there's some flush or flex in that traffic. In this instance, there's not going to be that sort of ability. So I, I like what you've done in breaking the mass of the building up by putting the, the recess in along Netherwood. And I guess I'll, I'll rely on what Elise had said, that the grades aren't as dramatic on that far side, because I'm still just kind of puzzled by the access to the underground off of that south side. It, it doesn't seem right to me, but that's just maybe my skewed understanding of the grades on that site. To go along with Patrick's comment about the four stalls right off of the curb cut, the three that are coming, just as you come into your property on the left, I think I'd get rid of them, I'd do something else there. I think we had talked about possibly looking at doing underground access onto Soden Drive for this development, to sort of alleviate some of the pressure off of the one curb cut. I don't know if you had a chance to look at that or if that's just not a possibility. So again, it, it's up to you, but it seems like we've got kind of some support from me and more support for something that's not here. Anybody else?
I'm not as, I'm with you, John, I'm not as opposed to the mass. I think it's the location of the masses. It's hard on the site to not put it right next to the existing single-family houses. So I think, I don't know, I, flip-flopping the parking in the building might help, but I don't know how you do that with this site. I'm kind of, need to see more, I think I'm on that path.
Last chance.
I, I like the entry aligned with the Walgreens. You'd certainly probably need three lanes there with a dedicated right turnout. We are a mighty short distance from the main intersection, so I'm wondering, again, John's comments about the hours and, and coming and going with being that close to the intersection and a signal at the intersection, how cars stack in and out of here. I do not like at all what you've done with the underground parking access. You're, you're now dragging however many stalls were underneath all the way through that site and car headlights and stuff, you know, towards resident, existing, uh, single-family residences to get all the way down the length of the building and around and down under the building. I think it created a lot more, a lot more traffic through the site than is necessary. I think an entrance out onto Netherwood or Soden for the underground portion would alleviate some of the work we're asking the one entrance to do, shared by two uses here. Trash is usually kept underneath the building, which means a trash truck has to navigate in and around this maze and all the way through the length of that building to get down and around and underneath the building to collect the trash. And they like to do that at four and five in the morning and you've got people sleeping 50 feet away. Not very appropriate. I'm, I'm not opposed to some density on this site, but I think this is probably a little too much density, too close to long-term existing single-family uses. Not a lot of room to screen or transition that, so it would need a lot of work.
You know, there might be, there might be an alternative to this and that would be to make stacked town home apartments accessed off of Netherwood to give that smaller-scale home approach and look, so that there is some activity to the streetscape. You know, each apartment has a door going out to Netherwood and the apartments sort of stack above them. That is been used successfully and there's several in Madison even, if you want to go local, like right where the CVS is down off of West Wash comes to mind, where it's an apartment building, but on the first floor, it's got some townhomes to sort of give some activity and some more residential scale to that instead of having it just look like a big block. You know, I, I, we're, I don't know if we're going to come to a concise path for you to move forward with, but I think that there's enough information that we've given that you can either take another run at it with some changes or you can't. I mean, that's, that's your decision.
No, it's helpful. Again, I, you know, we, we understand some of the points of view of the neighbors, again, out of the direction, the landowner for a number of years was looking at very low residential and I think the Plan Commission at the time or some of the village staff said, this is too good of a site to go too low residential. And we took that feedback and like most developers do, we try to maximize it. Okay, perfect. I appreciate you guys' time today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on for good discussion only, review of revised concept plan for possible multifamily development at 5214 County CC, applicant is All-Star Properties. Somebody here to talk on that?
So I believe we have Brian from All-Star and then James, their architect, so I know we'll have some people filter out here. Will they come up? So again, we saw this at our May Planning Commission meeting for our first concept review, so this is a revised concept review. I know some changes were made to the roof line of the townhomes. Oh, Kyo's here as well, hi, Kyo. And a little bit on the facade, too, of the multifamily building, but I guess I'll turn over to the applicant to talk a little bit about some of the changes that were made based on the feedback from last time and any other, you know, questions you have for Planning Commission, then just allow Planning Commission to share their thoughts before we see this project again.
Perfect. Go ahead.
Oh, let's look at the pictures. I think one of the, one of the things that we heard this, two of the things that we heard this last time, I think are visible in this, uh, these renderings right here. One was, is this a deep site? It's almost 500 feet in depth and it's heavily wooded and et cetera, et cetera. How does one find the entry? I think if we just move that down a little bit. So that was one of the things is, you know, we look at this of trying to actually, rather than having a, a straight facade along the length of the building there, we did have the indents and all that to try to break it up and to make it more interesting. But the big thing is, is actually to take the front entry and pull that forward and to give that some, some distinct color. You know, right now we're working, these colors are not the final colors that you'll see, but right now we're, we're trying to work within the framework of what is available through, uh, uh, you know, basically cement fiber, fiber cement, you know, panels, they're standard colors. So that would be their countryside red, of basically doing something quite distinct from the, the two tones of, of green that we use, you know, elsewhere. Again, that gives, from entering the site, you know, about, yeah, it's probably close to 300 feet into the site, one could see it at the entry. And again, for, right now, that also tells the visitor where the visitor parking is, you know, uh, you know, right across the, uh, right across the drive. The second thing that we, you know, one of the second, the second thing that we did was actually, there was a question of, did the townhomes, right now we had, we had seven townhomes this last time, because we wanted to increase the width of the garage, et cetera, et cetera, you know, just make them, them more usable. We reduced the number of townhomes from seven to six and we've changed the roof line a little bit to make it a little more contemporary. Before they were more of a, I would call a prairie modern, you know, with hip roof at the end, et cetera, et cetera. But this is to actually give some of them some additional height and to, uh, you know, make it a little more contemporary. Why we had townhomes in there initially and why we still do is because just on the other side of this are two-story residential developments. And we basically wanted to do something to, you know, mediate from the larger building, you know, down to the, uh, down to the lower. you know, down to the um, down to the lower. There are numerous other things internal to the building, you know, cha-change the, the uh unit count a little bit. We now it's predominantly, you know, two-bedroom units. Uh there's still a mix of ones and studios, but again, predominantly uh two-bedroom units. And, you know, we made some efforts to include space inside for, you know, for equipment, for trash, for all those various things, you know, and still maintain our, our uh, our, our uh unit count without changing the uh, the building footprint. But basically those were the, the big changes that, you know, from what we heard uh this last time that we tried to incorporate in, in, in these renderings. And we also showed some pictures, you know, this is a heavily, you know, wooded site. And the thought is we're going to obviously right around the building, we're gonna have to excavate and do some thing right along the, the uh drive. But we're gonna be, make any, every effort to retain the maximum number of uh the existing trees, significant trees that we can, so.
Anybody have questions, comments?
Yeah, I have a, a couple. It was interesting to see the, the eastern elevation with all the trees. And that was one of the questions I had is are you gonna be able to keep those trees? So, so that helps break up the, the eastern facade.
Yeah.
The last meeting, the comment was, I think John made it, you know, you've got a building that's the length of a football field.
Yeah, it's three hundred feet, exactly.
Now you have two half football fields. So I applaud the, where you've gone with it. I like the um, the entrance, you know, but I still think you have two long buildings. And so a little bit more attempt to try to break up that length.
Okay.
Possibly at the ends of the buildings, those corners uh could be celebrated a little bit more, potentially a higher parapet wall, maybe a different material color, something to break up that large mass. Okay, I think you have a good project for this site. One question I have or concern I have is the visitor parking. Uh you've got fifty-one units. Are ten spaces enough for visitor parking? Number one, but my chief concern is the flow, the pedestrian flow from that parking. So there's no sidewalk uh that, that I'm seeing. Uh so they're gonna get out of their car and they're gonna be crossing where you have underground parking coming up. And I'm a little concerned about that. I'd like to see sidewalk, which would be on the west edge of those parking spaces. Can't guarantee people are gonna use it, but at least the intent is there to, hey, take the sidewalk and then line that up with your entrance when it crosses the, the road. Okay?
Yeah, okay.
That's my main comments on it.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
I think it's a good use for this site. I think it, it can use a little bit more like Patrick said, but I think it's the right thing here. Trees help quite a bit, I think.
Yeah, I'd agree with that also, but I uh I was also interested in what was going to be done with the existing trees. And I would be for you trying to save however much as you can of them because they're, they're.
What we're gonna do is we'll go through and identify, some of them are junk trees, obviously, and not gonna last. But we're certainly gonna go through. And again, this is conceptual at this point in time. If we find that moving the building, whatever one foot or the drive particularly, you know, what, this way or that way, you know, to save a, a significant tree, you know, we will be doing that.
Along the east side then with the Methodist church, you would be.
We're trying to keep most of all of that, yes. Cause all the staging area is gonna be to this side, you know, so we're gonna stage the project from that. There's obviously going to be ten feet out from the building, there will be some disturbance. But the effort will be to maintain basically that strip of existing landscape.
And it may take some additional.
Yes, and that's why we're trying to work.
Growth in there.
Yeah, why, we're trying to work with the exist, this whole thing was predicated on, there's a, a grade, there's about a ten percent grade going up the, up there. And it's basically working with that, you know, so that's why we have, again, it works to our advantage. We have parking level at grade one side and the midpoint, we have parking level at grade. No, no, no depressions or make it very simple for everybody.
Yeah, I, I would uh feel good about you kind of furring with the Methodist church and maybe cooperating, them cooperating with you on getting that designed and built.
Yeah, I, cause I think the west side, their west side of their property, they've let go. I mean, they've maintained some of the existing stuff, so yes, yes, we would be cooperating with them.
I, I, everything that you said uh about the entry is hitting on all cylinders. I think the use of an accent color that's differentiating from every other um portion of the building makes sense. I think Patrick is, is also very right in, I think that you need to work on the parapets, you know, it's, it's not just the ins and the outs, it's the ups and downs kind of thing. Can you sort of explain to me the materials that you're looking to use? And I know that it's preliminary, but it kind of looks like a, a, a layer cake. And I just wanna make sure that what we're talking about is.
The layers would be, at the very, very bottom, there'd be a decorative concrete where we have uh the parking below, you know, exposed.
Yep.
You know, we don't see the concrete below grade, but we see from, from grade up, you know, we have a decorative concrete, then we have a, a masonry, you know, uh which would be the lighter color right there. That would be masonry. And then we would have two colors of hardy siding, you know. So basically that's what we're looking at is two layers of hardy siding. And again, at this point, I'm just picking from their color palette of what they have.
Yep.
It might go primed and painted, or we might do something, but that's basically what we're looking at.
And, and that, that's helpful and I, I get that. I understand that now. I would even say that maybe one thing that might help you would be to take the masonry that's on the base and take it all the way up to your sill for your second masonry to sort of help break up some of that layered cake tier. That might be helpful because it's just, it's a long, straight line that if you can start to break some of those things up visually, it's helpful. The second thing is uh, yeah, the entry a little bit more height maybe or, or something. Um I like the fact that you put a canopy over it.
Yep.
Make it substantial enough where you can really truly read it. The planting imagery that you had done for that perspective.
Again, that's, we're basically using the existing trees or whatever. It's a, it's a, that's very much, that's very illustrative and.
Yeah, cause I mean, as you get towards the townhomes, it's eleven feet to the property line to the building. You know darn well that you're not gonna be able to save a tree back there.
No, we're, we're back from, from the far side, you know, from here is, that's our staging area and everything else. And that's gonna get trampled. We could save to the church side with some efficiency, but there's gonna, we're gonna lose things on the uh, on the west side.
So I just, I'd want everybody to sort of realize that I appreciate what you're trying to sell, but it's, it's not very real. I think that the condos on the back, I don't think we've really paid a whole lot of attention to them because we're so worried about the block of the apartments up front. Um I appreciate what you're trying to do with them, making them sympathetic and um representative of what's behind them. Uh I think that makes sense. I think the materials that you're sort of portraying on them, again, makes sense. It's, they're practical, they're similar to what's behind them. Totally in support of what Patrick said about sidewalk uh connectivity on the front of those parking stalls to try to get it to tie together. Yeah, I think it's a good building for the site. I just think that there's some things that you still need to work on. All right.
Thank you very much. Thank you very, very much.
All right, moving on. Item G, review and possible recommendation to the village board for a new or of new construction hours ordinance. Elise, you wanna give us some background, please?
This has been on my whiteboard in my office for a very long time, so excited to bring this forward. Uh we worked with Derek Punches, our village attorney, on a construction hours ordinance. And um this is something that has been requested for a while. I know Jeff and I and others get a lot of calls from people, you know, there's a neighborhood getting built behind my house or starting at six AM or they're working on a Sunday in the evening or whatever that might be. And um we really haven't had anything other than to start a noise ordinance, which is pretty flexible and hard to enforce to really limit construction um hours. And so we wanted to make it simple um to administer and also to understand. So what we're proposing is seven to seven, seven days a week. We wanted to make sure that people who are kind of, what we were calling the weekend warriors, doing, you know, mowing your lawn or you're um repainting your cabinets and your garage and like that. Anything that really doesn't require a building permit, that's not included in, in this definition. But anything that, yeah, um plowing, blowing, you know, snowblowing, all of those things. We wanted to make sure that anything that required a building permit, whether or not you actually got one when you were supposed to. So he's like, oh, I didn't get a building permit. Well, you really should have. So um, so all those activities um that might be going on a house, you know, roofing, that kind of thing, as well as of course, construction of new buildings and um, you know, construction of public improvements too. So whether it's our contractors that are repaving a road or it's Verdiens contractors doing um, you know, constructing uh utilities on their site, anything like that would be included. So um we have, uh we wanted to bring this before you tonight. We have not taken this to the village board yet, but we've been working on this as staff probably a good five months or so um with quite a few revisions. But I'm happy to take any questions or suggestions before we bring this to the board.
Hey, thank you. Anybody?
You've answered most of my questions uh that I had on it. But the one question I have is how would you notify subcontractors? Or would you require that the permit holder notify them?
I think it would probably fall under that, like you saw in here, this would be included as a copy of the um ordinance and all the building permits. So um if it was, cause where there was a general contractor and there's subs for roofing or something, they would be responsible for, since those people aren't pulling a per-permit, they'd have to let their subs know that these are the hours and then um, you know, this is enforceable by the police department too. So people would just be able to call in and they'd, of course, start with more of an education approach.
Right, and I was gonna say, I, I wonder if you start with a warning rather than right away, it's a citation.
Yeah, that's how we approached almost, you know, everything unless it's a life and death, you know, type of thing. But it's education, you know, did you know that we um, you know, don't allow peacocks in the Village of Oregon? And then this is why, and then, you know, what's your plan to correct that? Um so this would be similar where kind of giving people the benefit of the doubt. Hey, it's six thirty, this is what our hours, can you please wait till seven? And then if it's something that continues, then we have a avenue to cite them and that would work through our municipal court, our municipal judge.
Seems pretty reasonable.
I'd add a few comments. This happens to be in my, squarely in my lane. Not at all opposed to maybe a better defined ordinance. I, I think there's always been kind of something out there that said, you know, there were some hours or it used to be.
We've, we've, no, we've always just said seven to seven and.
I've assumed it was. I, I think the seven to seven is reasonable. I just marked up a number of things here that I'll go through to get you thinking on and, cause I find ambiguities in here and people are always looking for an angle to either complain about something or get out of something. Uh you would wanna verify that it's seven days a week. It doesn't say that in here, you know, so it does include weekends and holidays and, you know, whatever that.
We had that in, we had.
I, I didn't.
Well, no, we had it in there originally uh, cause we're gonna have separate, cause you have to maintain Monday through Friday, you have to maintain the same on Saturday. You're not allowed to change. And then we were thinking if we'd have different hours for Sunday. And so the attorney just took it all out and just said it's, but you might be right.
It should just say.
Any, any day.
Twenty-four, you know, seven days a week, you know, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, just so there's no ambiguity. Read my own scratching here. There's, it says in here that uh no persons will operate any mechanical equipment, uh equipment vehicle. So if somebody pulls up to a job site at six forty-five, they're operating a vehicle. Is the neighbor gonna say, hey, they can't be out there, they're operating, you know, they're not working. But, you know, you can't all magically arrive right at seven. Deliveries sometimes happen out of our control. The plumber calls the supply house and they drop off a bathtub and they might show up at five forty-five. We didn't ask them to do that, but it, it happens. And, and it's, you know, not something that's easily controllable. I'm wondering the way it reads with vehicles, equipments and tools and power and fuel and hammers and saws and compressors. It doesn't say anything about hand tools, so can a person show up early and work quietly? It doesn't say anything about indoor versus outdoor work. Cause there are times when a house is being completed and the deadline is tight and somebody stays till wee hours of the night to work indoors. The, the noise outside should be pretty minimal in those cases, but this doesn't really indicate whether you can or can't do that. And it is a fairly common occurrence, so I'd like to see it addressed. Items four and five, I was asking or thinking or questioning about other remodel. You mentioned roofing and siding, those are of course items that do, you know, easily disturb the neighbors. And then you had indicated kind of anything that requires a permit might be in here. Kind of said significant alteration, so again, there's an amb-ambig. A little ambiguous as to what that is, or if you said, okay, if it requires a permit, it, this applies or it doesn't. Just again, so that it's, people will split hairs here and then the police officer and the judge and, you know, whoever are gonna be constantly trying to mediate those, those hairs, so. Another comment, as I looked at this, this relates primarily to noise. I know we've had a number of uh instances and Jeff gets a number of calls and stuff about some other common construction site uh problems with trash blowing around or mud washing out in the street and things like that. And I'm just wondering, well, if you're doing this, could you maybe, maybe key in on a couple of those points just so it's all in one place and it's not multiple ordinances?
So this is like, and this is like one of those things, changing ordinances is obviously crazy because you have to be thinking about all those things and, and this is a great example of like, yeah, those are all great points cause that's what we wanna do. We needed and wanted a property maintenance ordinance for many years. And we are, we've already commissioned that and we're, we've met once and we'll be working through that over the next couple of months. And that will include some things on noise, but it'll include a lot of those type of things, you know. Uh so, yeah, dumpsters, you know, that type of thing, personal dumpsters, if you have one at your house or um trash. You know, we have, we always wanna try to enforce things like erosion control and all those type of things. And the other difficult thing is right now, we don't have a lot of teeth for enforcement. And so that's kind of what we wanna work in that too. But that will be coming to you late, mid, late summer, ready for drafts, fall.
We're bringing that dragging out of retirement to help on that.
Yeah, the great Mac drag, drag will be helping us with that.
But good point that if we're providing a packet for, you know, folks and building permit, making sure that some of those property maintenance things, whether it's about dragging mud into the streets or um other things like that, trash. Just make sure that's referenced or copy of relevant pages or something is provided in the packet. Anything else, Scott? If you had any other markup, feel free to email me.
That was all the, all the stuff.
We tried outlaw country music being played, but apparently it was a First Amendment problem.
Thank you. Anybody else? I think it's a, a great place to start and I think it's been good suggestions. All right, moving on then. Or do we need to make a recommendation to the village board or do you want to come back with another revision?
Yeah, we'll probably come back with the job. We do wanna um, just because there are folks that are calling and active projects coming on, you know, they've been asking about when we can get this on the books and it can be enforceable, but um I'd like to, whether it's bringing it back to a meeting or um, you know, Scott, if you're interested in seeing a draft. Whether it's bringing it back to a meeting or um you know, Scott, if you're interested in seeing a draft, I'm not sure how quickly Derek can. Change some of those things too, but we could send it to you and just see if this is along the lines and we'll see how the timing works out if we wanna bring it. Back, but maybe at this point, if you wanted to recommend approval with those changes, um if we can. Up to you, if you wanna see it again, we could bring it back in July, otherwise um we could make those changes and maybe get that on probably a later. Probably the early July board meeting at the soonest.
I don't know if my changes were quite specific enough that you can say.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, bring it back, do we need to table it or then, or do we just like?
How did I have this?
Well, you said review and possible recommendation of village board.
Yeah, why don't we table it to the next meeting to to have the changes, you know, drafted and reviewed by the attorney.
I'll entertain a motion to table then.
I'd make a motion to table till the July meeting.
Do we have a second? We have a second by Larry, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries, we'll see it next month. Moving on then for item H for discussion only updates on ongoing zoning text amendment. Elise, please fill us in.
So I'm not gonna drag you through all the, we've been through it enough times, but um. One, one final um piece of the text amendments um that wanted to. Uh sixty two, yeah, just right there, so um. So I'm gonna put together a nice memo here, but long story short, um Derek, our village attorney and Sonya and I were just reviewing our our last draft and. Derek noticed that for the family definition, um the way that the proposed language was worded is actually more restrictive, he felt than. What had been there previously, which was certainly not our intent, we wanted to be more um. Inclusive and flexible about different family structures within um village, just kind of keeping up with the times and making sure that we're. Um more in in line with more updated codes, so she just kind of went through here some of the reasons why um. We made some last minute adjustments and then the next page in blue there is um what we're proposing as. The, the new language, so um. I'm not as well versed in this as Sonya and Derek are, but I can take questions and do my best to respond and. Um if there's again minor uh changes that you um would like to see then. Um we can bring those forward, we're hoping to potentially do the public hearing at the July meeting to get all of these. Moving forward, obviously, we took the um the kind of design overlay conversation out and we're, we're gonna have that as a separate conversation, a couple of those other items. Solar wireless facilities, I think other things we um kind of collectively agreed to to talk about a little bit later, but. Um any thoughts on the, the family definition that I may or may not be able to address? It's, it's complicated.
No objections on my end, but I wanna throw a hypothetical at you, uh and this is actually a real situation, my mother-in-law was just in a hospice facility. With eight patients, it was a house, it was a very nice facility. And I don't know if that would be governed under a planned development or something, but I I would just hate to see if this new language. Excluded that possibility.
Yeah, so a situation like that would be um a community-based. Yep, CBRF residential facility, so that's a separate use that depending on the size of the facility in which zoning district, it's either allowed by right or with conditional use permit. So because that has more of a, a central purpose, everyone's there to either receive care or they're living together and more of a. You know, like a assisted living arrangement or something like that, that is in a different use category than just, you know, a single family home.
I think there's statutes that require up to certain sizes have to be allowed in certain zoning districts and stuff if I recall.
Might be up to eight, it's allowed maybe by right and then larger than that, um there was actually one we had back in twenty twenty and. Um a neighborhood here on the west side of the village, it didn't quite make it, it was on the agenda, but we didn't make it actually to the public hearing, but. He was looking at building a a CBRF as well with an existing neighborhood and having it look like a house, but it would be. Um we'd have a caregiver on staff and communal kitchen and things like that, but everybody with their own room and bathroom and things like that, but.
One to eight is considered small, nine to twenty is medium and twenty one and up is large, so that's how they're classified. One to eight is residential.
Yeah, the other, did you pull up those word, could you pull up those word documents, um the other. Bet that's kind of related to these zoning text amendments, um was there any other questions about the family definition? Um so I did, this would not be part of the public hearing and the, the ordinance, but just kind of running alongside. Um our chicken and bee conversation, um I have put together draft uh applications for an annual. Accessory beekeeping license and annual chicken keeping license, so they're pretty similar um basic information about. You know, contact info, address, number of chickens, number of hives pertaining on your animal there, number of bees, exactly. Um date of birth for the bees, all of that, so um. If you scroll up a little bit, Jeff, um just below that table, so you can see and bold there, um just like we have with like a. A building permit for a fence or shed or something like that, they would have to, um an applicant would need to attach a site plan um showing, you know, their parcel. The, the main structure and then where a coop or um and the run or the hives, yeah, and then if there's a flyway barrier that's needed. Um kind of where that all is in relation to the, the side, front, rear property lines, um dimensions and then. Application fees are the same, we kind of kept this more similar to where our dog license fees are, so. Throwing out thirty dollars for initial application and the annual renewal would be ten dollars, we can make sure every year that there's no changes to. Number of hives or chickens and that everything is kind of still located where it would be and if we get questions from neighbors, that we can make sure we have a current. Plan on file and that what is out there on the ground is consistent with what's in the plan and then just on the second page for both of these, I. Copy pasted what our proposed language is for chickens or bees um. And made sure that that was right there on the application, so if somebody's pulling this, I don't also have to go diving in the code to find the relevant section, but it's right there. I think the only thing I wanted to mention was, we talked a little bit about um just kind of finding a path to compliance for folks and and. There's still gonna be um. There'll be more of an effort in the next month, assuming we're gonna keep moving forward with the public hearing in July to. On our social media and stuff, reach out and say, you know, if you're interested or current chicken keeper or um. What's the right term for a, an AB, um uh apiarian or something that um if you have bees that you, yeah. You have bees that you, um but we're gonna be talking about this, this is what we're proposing um. And we don't expect compliance right away, obviously, um. We were, we're not gonna be the chicken police and have people, you know, calling their herd or anything like that, but this is where we're aiming. Um and kind of use the late summer and fall and winter to continue to educate outreach and allow people if they wanted to go ahead and just. Say, yep, I've got my chickens and I'm following the ordinance, I wanna go ahead and just get my application that they could go ahead and do so later this year and that could just be their. Twenty twenty five application if they kind of wanted to get it on the books and that way it's taken care of and then obviously next year, if it's springtime and somebody decides they wanna get chickens. This will be in place if they wanna apply in March or April or something, it'll all be um there, but like we talked about with. You know, construction hours, we're always starting with an education approach first, so give people the benefit of the doubt, they may not know that this is on the books or. They may have operated in this kind of gray area where it's not permitted, but not really enforced to. You know, be uh prohibited yet, so um say, you know, let's move towards a plan where this is in compliance, we wanna. Protect your right to continue these uses on your property, but also we wanna protect your neighbors so that they have understanding that this isn't gonna get out of control, that you've got. Roosters and multiple chickens that are, you know, wandering across property lines and things like that too, so um hopefully that timeline. Gives people again time to come into compliance, just become aware of what we're proposing, I think every other code that I've checked that has chickens and bees, this is. Like the number of chickens, the square footage for coops and runs and all this stuff with the bees too, as far as. You know, access to water, number of hives, it's pretty consistent with what you would see in any other, you know, small to medium sized town, so I don't think what we're asking is. You know, out of the ordinary for what's typically allowed in a small town setting.
It was quite a few months ago, we talked about this, I don't recall, but will this application also then. Uh permit and regulate the sale of eggs or honey from those on the site, or doesn't it address that?
I don't think that was.
That would have to follow like under home occupation, right? Home sales, I don't think, yeah, this doesn't regulate any of that.
They kind of go together in some cases.
Yeah.
I think that is um, where did I throw this? Mentioned that, I know for one of them, it said that the sale is not permitted um.
On one of the applications?
Yeah, well, on one of the, the proposed language, yeah, it's been a little while since we. Reviewed all this too. I don't see a thing in the. Bees.
Sale of chickens, chicken meat, eggs or other chicken is prohibited without the approval of Wisconsin Department of Agriculture, Trade and Consumer Protection.
Yeah, there we go, so we're not prohibiting it, but it's gotta be, we'll throw it to the state, let them deal with it, yeah. Yeah, they have their own regulations for seasoning and everything.
Chicken byproducts, that's like McDonald's nuggets, right? Okay.
So two comments from my end, um I like the fact that the renewal rate is much cheaper, so I think that's, that's very appropriate and and appreciated. The other comment is it might be helpful to have an example of what an acceptable site plan is, particularly for people that. Don't have that terminology or where do I start, kind of.
And maybe you could give them a, an example where you take a Google image shot of your property and they could just, you know, sketch it in on that and. Help people with scale and.
Okay.
Things like that.
Yeah, I can maybe throw it on the last page and just say, an example of site plans provided on page three.
Okay. Anything else? Moving on, item I for discussion only, Dane County Regional Housing Strategy. Elise, you wanna give us some background on this and anybody wanna have comments?
Yeah, I um I have not been involved in all the meetings, um. Kind of the, the regular meetings for the Dane County Regional Housing Strategy, but um just because they've all fallen on planning commission nights, but um. This is an effort that's been at least the last year and a half, if not two years, um by Olivia Perry, who's the main um Dane County housing planner, I think she's been. Before you all to, to do some presentations before, but um they worked with stakeholders from all over the county, nonprofits. Municipalities, residents and lots of surveys and engagement, um to create this action plan, um I'm not. An expert on this either, I just wanted to mostly get this in front of you, I knew we had a lot on the agenda, but um if you all would like to dive into this more. Olivia is happy to come to a meeting or I'm happy to kind of digest a little bit more with you, I know Oregon's mentioned quite a few times as. You know, a leader in some areas and um room for growth and improvement and others, so. Um I need to give myself some more time to kind of digest this, it's mostly just getting this in your hands, if you wanted to have some time to read it over and then. If you'd like to discuss at a future meeting, um I can definitely put it on an agenda for later this summer.
Anybody feels like they would like to do that or? I will say that I went, this is just my personal opinion, I went to the first few meetings of this and. I don't put a whole lot of value in this report and that's based purely on my, again, my opinion. That this was less of a plan created through scientific or organic exploration and more of a. Plan that was looking for support from predetermined solutions. In other words, you walked in, they had a predetermined list of answers for you on a multiple choice question basis. And they sort of directed the way that you, they wanted conversation to go, in my opinion, um so. But I'm happy to have somebody come in and explain it better, uh if that's what the plant commission would like. So, I'm hoping.
It probably makes sense to keep up with, with what's going on to know. Whether it be hated or not, that we.
Totally, yep. Yeah, so I guess put it on a future agenda and we can discuss it and if we wanna then have um somebody come in and explain it to us, why don't we do that?
Okay, I'll see, if I can find a time that works for her.
It sounds like you wanted to first have a discussion.
Yeah, give us a chance to read it for a couple of months, put it on a future agenda and then we can talk about it and how we wanna handle it and move forward.
Okay.
And this, that's in our packet is a very abridged version of it, there, there are several appendices full of data, I mean, I. Quite shocked at the amount of data they dug into on housing and statistics and and such, so make sure you. Read the full version of it to get the full effect.
Yeah, I can put the full, full version or some of those appendices too and pull out stuff that as it relates to Oregon um in a future memo, probably. Be early fall, if we have a, a lighter agenda, be a good time to spend some, time to talk about that.
Okay. Uh moving on, Director of Community Development reports status of development projects, everything is moving, I'm assuming?
Things are moving, uh one thing I wanted to mention, um we were getting some, some calls and some creative rumor mill ideas about um the QuickTrip car wash. Uh I won't call out anybody and, and the, the ideas they were coming up with, but um as you may have seen, it's. Um they're moving right along, there's only one bay um currently being built on that car wash site and if you remember, we approved it, a two bay. Um car wash, so I did reach out to QuickTrip a few weeks ago and asked them, um you know, what the plan was in terms of. Construction, is that happening later, were they waiting on a part or you know, what's, what's kind of the plan for the development of the site, so their response to me was that. Um they are just building that first bay as sort of phase one, waiting to see what interest and demand is and. Um that, you know, e- equipment for the car wash is obviously, um you know, pretty specialized and. I'm sure not cheap, so that's, that was their response to me, I take it for what you will, um I did kind of. You know, it's unfortunate we didn't discuss that plan, I'm not sure if that was on the table for them when we went through the site plan, ideally, that would have been discussed as sort of. This is phase one, this is phase two, I'm not overly concerned about it, but I do think that it will be popular and I think we will probably see some. Cueing there, I think there's room, um there's, there's quite a lot of pavement and room for queuing, but I think with one stall, they're gonna. Probably see quickly how that's working, um so just wanted to let you know, that's essentially what I heard from QuickTrip. Um it's not off the table, they have all the utilities and space and the, the, you know, first hall is still where we expected it to be, it's not that they shifted it over or anything like that, but. Um just a little bit of a surprising response um from QuickTrip, but at least they did respond and. I think when we see it open, it'll just be that first bay.
Okay.
That's where that one is, um any other projects you wanted to share?
I saw South Main start today, they start, they tore up the asphalt today on South Main, so. Um if you wanted one last picture on, on that broken asphalt, it's too late. Uh and that's, and then uh secondly is roadway maintenance beginning, um and it's gonna be kind of in the same area of uh South Perry Parkway. Um all the way over to Alpine as well as South Bar Oak and um. It'll be interesting, but uh so those two projects will be kind of running concurrently, obviously waiting till school gets out for anything in front of the school over there. Um we are working through uh phase four development of Highlands and Netherwood is going through uh approvals and. Um development agreement for that, um if you remember phase four and then phase five would be the last phase, so that's actually moved along. Pretty well. Um phase two of Greenview Preserve is also going through, you've seen, remember you saw. Did we bring the playground? To plant commission? Just park board, okay, yeah, so the construction of a playground over there that we're working with. Uh Veridian over there, they're actually gonna build it, we're giving them credit back on the park impact fees, um so that's happening. Um and Autumn Ridge is moving ahead and hopefully we'll be selling lots and, and starting some construction here in the next uh two months.
One thing to mention on the um, Veridian property, we're working on the, the phase two. Uh, like subdivision improvements, the development agreement right now with them, but their initial phasing plan was just. You know, kind of a, a concept, they're not held to that phasing plan, obviously the whole neighborhood is platted, um, but they've switched around the areas that are gonna be. Phase two versus phase three, I think they're still determining where phase three will be, but phase two will be an extension of. Stoddard Drive, um, kinda backing up to the.
Richard.
East Richards Road, um. Neighborhood, um, and then continuing all the way almost to um, Perry Parkway, but not actually connecting to Perry Parkway. Um, but that includes a mix of, you know, there are different housing sizes and types, I think some of the. Alley loaded, um, homes as well too, so um, they, they said that they mostly switched around just based on. Market mix and what people are looking for at this time and they felt that that would be the, the better phase to go through, I think that was originally gonna be. Phase three or four and has now moved to two, so um, we have some of those maps that'll be included in the development agreement when we. See that, but no rearrangement of the lots or anything like that, more just a, a rearrangement of the phasing.
Yeah, that's kind of a misconception out there is when someone puts a phasing plan forward, I know neighbors have been a little upset, but you know, that's. It's, it's obviously, we're not forcing them to go to an exact phase based off of either market conditions changing or anything like that and. You know, the, the final plat has still been approved, everything, you know, nothing is changing other than how they want to see that developed. And you know, unless we as staff, I think felt it was. Just didn't make any sense whatsoever to maybe do one here and then phase two way over here, generally it makes sense, um. Why things happen that way, but. A phasing plan is kinda like a concept plan, right? You know, it's concept and it's a phasing and it can both can change. Okay. Um, upcoming meeting dates, we uh, will have it the second Thursday next month because of the holiday. Um, everything else is there for you, Thursday, August first. Uh, item C, planning, staff meeting agendas are in your packet for comment, if you have any questions. We don't have any for, anything for future meetings, so I will take a request for adjournment.
So, uh, second, uh, fr- make a motion to adjourn.
So moved. And seconded right over here too, so. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.